We'll begin this morning with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the October twenty, or sorry, October 24, October 14, 2024, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. This is a work session. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Rippon is not able to join us this morning. Our presentation this morning for our work session is on judicial tax foreclosure sales. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the county councillor, Mr Eckert, to talk about this topic.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rich Eckert, Shawnee County Councillor. We just recently wrapped up our judicial foreclosure tax sale. It was, it's an online event, by the way. I say wrapped up. We still have lots of work to do ahead of us. A full tax sale takes just short of a year from start to finish. So we're in the process now of the deeds. So we'll be going out here shortly to all of the successful purchasers. And then we'll go through a period where property owners, prior property owners, will have their rights to go back and get any surplus money. So Kansas is a, it's somewhat of a unique state, but it's the right way to do things in that if you owe $10,000 in back taxes and at the tax sale your property sells for $20,000, then you, the property owner, get $10,000 back. You have to petition to the court to get it, but that's how that works. A lot of states, and there's been a tremendous amount of litigation on this, keep the whole amount. And as a matter of fact, last term, there was a United States Supreme Court case, correct me if I'm wrong, it was either Minnesota or Michigan, one of those states where they actually keep the whole thing. And the United States Supreme Court said, no, that's not right. You keep your taxes and your taxes only. And that's going to be, continue to be litigated, by the way, even with a Supreme Court ruling, because a lot of states are loath to give up that sort of revenue. And I think the case that, that went up, the, the homeowner had paid the taxes, but not the interest. There was a miniscule amount owed, like less than a hundred bucks. So it was a horrible fact pattern for the state to take that up, but that's what happened. So anyway, that's kind of the state of the industry right now on tax foreclosure sales. Real briefly, I'm sure you've had some experience already with this, perhaps Jim did one of these as well. But I want to talk about eligibility. And we have three types of properties. We have homestead properties, properties that have houses on them, there are abandoned properties, and there are all other properties, and they each are a separate class. So on a residence, when it's occupied by the owner and it's their primary residence, then they have to be at least three years delinquent before we can start the process. And that's very important. It's, we can't do anything until that three years is hit. So when I say three years, that's, it has to be three years delinquent before we can even start. And we'll go about how we start here in a minute. If the property is abandoned, it's only one year. The problem with classifying a property as abandoned is, how do I know? How do I know for 365 days in a row it's been abandoned? I personally did not visit the property. The sheriff's office did not personally visit the property. So we are a little bit careful with this one. All other property is two years, and here we're talking about commercial buildings, apartment buildings, vacant land, so forth and so on. So we don't like to use abandoned property simply because it's on us to prove it. And that's a hard thing to prove. So as a general rule, we just go with the three years for houses and the two years for everything else. So how does a property get picked to be in the tax sale? So this is the first tax sale that we've had since I've been back. So I was very interested in how we do it because, I'm going to be honest with you, the real workhorses here are Tabitha and Cheyenne in my office. They are experts in this field. They know so much more than me, and they should be the ones at this podium. So if you're listening, you're welcome. But they do it all. So they actually are the ones who choose the properties. So last week, when I knew that we were going to be here today, I sat down with them and I said, well, how do you pick them? And what they do is they develop a spreadsheet. And the spreadsheet lists properties that are delinquent by different ways, right? So it's lifted, it's listed by years delinquent. So yes, we do have properties that are six, seven, eight years delinquent and more, and I'll come back to that in a moment. There's amounts owed. Obviously, a, a commercial property that has value will have a lot more taxes on it than a residential value. And then we also have on there a parcel ID as an identifier. Now, we don't, what we don't do is we don't look, we don't drill down into who the owner of the home is, right? So if Agatha Christie owns a home, we don't go look up Agatha Christie. We're looking up years delinquent, we're looking up amounts owed. So there are two different ways, and they randomly pick out, they, us, we pick out randomly those parcel IDs. Now, here's the kicker to all of this. We do have a choke point to how many properties that we can put in a sale. And what we've discovered is that is right around 300 or so. And the choke point is how Shawnee County has chosen to conduct a tax sales. So we have reached out and we have looked at how Wyandotte County does it, Johnson County, Celine, and a couple other counties. And what they do is they work hand in hand with the treasurer, and there are employees who are dedicated, solely dedicated to this, which we don't have. In my office, which does most of the work, Tabitha and Cheyenne are full-time paralegals that do the rest of the responsibilities of the office, so this isn't their full-time work. But we're still not the choke point. The choke point is, if you have a piece of property, the first thing we do is we send it to a title company, right? And we ask the title company to, I'll get to this, I'll get to that screen here in a second. We ask that title company, who has an interest in the property? And it's a much bigger question than who owns it. Is there a mortgage? Is there an IRS tax lien? Does the city have a weed abatement cost or a nuisance cost? Are there other lien holders? Are there promissory contracts? If the owner is deceased, which happens quite a bit, then we task the title company, and we do it as well, to track down the heirs to the property. So one property could have us generating four, five, nine, 10 different entities that we have to serve with the legal paperwork. So in other words, we have to take the copy of the lawsuit, and we have to find every single person that has an interest in one parcel. So service is conducted by the clerk of the district court. We give them the lawsuit, but it's up to them to print it, get the, and, and we'll give them the addresses from the title company, but it's up to them to print it. They then deliver it to the sheriff's office, and it's up to the sheriff's office to perfect service. And they'll do that two ways. They'll actually have their process servers go up to a house, knock on the door, pin, they'll either hand it in person, which is the best service of all, that's the absolute best service, get a signature, and that comes back to the clerk of the district court's office. Or they'll tack it to the door if no one answers, and then they'll follow up with a postcard to that loan landlord or any of the addresses that we've given them that says, hey, we tacked service to your door, okay? So that's how that works. But one tax sale could easily generate in excess of 1,200 of those contacts. When we file that lawsuit, it's a very busy time for the service, the service process servers and the clerk of the district court's office. So back when I was here the first time, 1.0, as I call it, at some point in time, we were having two tax sales a year. We were averaging about 200, in excess of 200 properties per sale, and we got rustled to the ground by all of the other entities. And I'm not, I'm not dinging them at all because their point is absolutely fair in that they're inundated with this lawsuit. And other counties have had the same issue, and they've had differing responses. One county, for instance, they do the title search in-house. Now, I would never recommend that because the title company does this for like $75 a parcel, and that is incredibly cheap. It's what they do for a living, so they're going to be better at it. And if there's a service issue, they're providing the title insurance. So I would never suggest that we change the way that we do things there. In another county, they have three full-time treasurer employees, I believe it's three, who do nothing but work on tax sales. And what they're doing is that they're actually more than just what you would think a treasurer would do. They're actually preparing this paperwork, and the county in that case has their own individual process servers. Like, they don't push it off on the sheriff. They have in-house process servers whose sole job is to manage these tax sales. So that is the way other counties have approached this. We have chosen not to. We kind of do it in our spare time, if you'll allow me that, siliquism. But that's what we do. So.
Now, Mr Eckert, just to jump in here just for a second before we get any farther. When we talk about the entities that are taking issue, we've got the clerk's office and the district court, the district court clerk, who they're processing the lawsuit. We have the title companies that are doing the title work. We have the sheriff's office that's doing all the process serving. And then we have your office that's preparing all of the paperwork and monitoring it. And so we're talking about the number of people that can be, or number of parcels, rather, not people, but number of parcels that can be added to each lawsuit. Is there any benefit in looking at this as filing them one at a time instead of batching it into large groups at a time?
The only thing I'll add is that you didn't touch upon the treasurer's office, where the whole thing starts. They are the ones, and I'll get into this here in a bit into the slideshow, that actually keeps track of the delinquencies. And then they'll put that notice in the Metro News that we all see. And that's actually the very first tax sale, so to speak. There's actually, every tax sale actually has two tax sales, and it's, it's the way the Kansas legislature has chosen to title these. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it's, it's how a county protects its tax lien. But to your question, what was your question again?
To file them one, to file it one at a time on a parcel.
Yeah. A filing it one at a time does not save anybody any, any favors because then you're talking about managing 300 lawsuits as opposed to managing one lawsuit. I, I think that this way is the best way to do it, that we're doing it now in terms of how we're doing it. My, I gave you that whole last five-minute speech to tell you that if you wanted to beef up tax sales, we'll have to look at doing it a little bit differently. I personally don't think there's a problem with the way that we're doing it now, and I'll get into that a little bit later, too. But if you wanted a more aggressive approach to tax sales, then we would probably need a little bit of help, particularly, I think, on the, the notion of process side. But that's something we can do, but that's something that the three of you would have to decide.
Now, the district court, if a individual does not pay their court fines, it gets referred to a collection agency. Then if the municipal court, if you don't pay your court fines, it goes to a collection agency. If we have some deficiencies, I think we have a collection agency that's, is this something that can be referred out to a private firm to be handled, or does it have to be handled by statute within the councillor's office?
It has to be handled by statute. And I'll tell you why. On a, on a bill owed to the health agency, say that someone owes us 60 bucks, we have the ability to waive 60 bucks, or 30, or 40. And in fact, we're sort of doing that when we hand it over to a collection agency because they need paid. So if they take a third of it, they're keeping 20 and we're getting 40. Real estate taxes, you have to collect every cent. We don't have an ability to say to a, because remember, we're also collecting for the school districts, townships, the city, all the mill levy entities, and we don't have any ability to touch their amounts. So you really can't give this out to a debt collector without a change in the statute, or you devise a different way to pay the debt collector. Because the taxes have to be paid in full. There's only one way that they don't get paid in full, and that is if at the actual tax sale, it doesn't bring enough to pay off the taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with, with, I, I think we were on how we randomly choose these properties. I do want to point out something that I don't think enough people use. So from time to time, and it, and it was one of the very first communications that I got when we announced that I was coming back to the county, a, a city council member who will remain, who will remain nameless, almost immediately texted me, I got a property I need you to sell. And in fact, it was in this last tax sale. So we have a site on our website, and I put it up, I put up the, the screen. It's a property referral form. So there are times when a tax sale is the absolute best way to clean up a title and to get it into the hands of someone who's going to be productive. And there are many of the, many ways that a property becomes dilapidated, but the one that seems to occur the most is when an owner dies and there's not an obvious heir, or the heirs want nothing to do with the property. And that, that happens quite a lot. In every tax sale, you'll have both of those. Well, you'll have a, an owner with no obvious heirs, a deceased owner, or we'll be able to actually find the heirs, and we'll have a very interesting conversation about their life that we didn't really need to have. But the end of that is, is they want nothing to do with it. So how do you clean that property up and get it to be productive again? And the best way to do that is a tax sale. So what we encourage people to do is to refer properties to us. I'm not saying that we'll be able to put it in the tax sale because it might not be eligible. Sometimes the taxes are paid even on a dilapidated property. But it gives us a chance to look at it. And if the taxes are delinquent, more than likely, we're going to be able to put it in the next tax sale. So there is a property referral form. We encourage citizens to use it. The people that have my cell phone are free to, to call me and point out, hey, here's a property. And in fact, I think in this last tax sale, there were at least four properties that we put in that was, that were referred to us. In other words, they were outside of our normal process. And one of them was unique in that a property owner owned the property on three sides of a very small strip, and they were having trespass problems. The owners were out of state, they weren't taking care of it. And the owner called us up, just basically saying, what can we do here? What are our options? And we looked it up, and sure enough, they weren't, the taxes weren't being paid on this, on this strip. So that was a case where we were actually able to help out a landlord on a, on a kind of a different issue. But all of those are issues that we can take care of in a tax sale. So like I said, if, if anybody takes away anything from today's lecture, it is that please, there, there is a property referral form online that you can go in and say, hey, you know, ABC North Street has these issues. And it'll give us a chance to see if there's back taxes and if there's anything that we can do about it. So I don't think that's generally well-known. And so when I was talking with my team, this was something that we wanted to highlight today, is that we do take referrals and we will be glad to look at those. So the foreclosure process in general, at the end of the day, it's still just a lawsuit. So everything that you get in a lawsuit still has to be accounted for. So we file, we're in front of a district court judge. And so going from there, the statutes that, that tell us how to do things is KSA 79-2801 at SEEK. And then that's kind of the boilerplate language I put in front of you. It's the duty of the county councillor to file the action. It's brought in the name of the BCC. And if you remember, every time that we file an action, we actually bring the petition to you and you vote on it. And then we file that action that day or the next day. So it's, it's you are the plaintiff in the lawsuit. So the lawsuit contains everything that you think it would, the description of the parcel, the amount of taxes, the name of the owners, and all of the parties. And then again, I kind of went over this, but as the last bullet point explains, that the summons is personally served on each defendant. Sometimes you can't get that service, and you are allowed to do a service by publication. And what that basically means is that we would, or have the ability to file that service in the Metro News, and that is a service for all. Now, there are different levels of service, and there are double, different levels of legal protection. That is the least of the protected services, so we have to be careful with how we use that. And, and we look at those individually when we have to go that far. Anyway, and Commissioner, to your question, 79-1703A, the county is prohibited from entering into a settlement which reduces, forgives, or discharges any portion of the taxes. So the legislature has been very clear on all the taxes have to be collected. And again, we are the collector for all of the mill levy entities. So the process does start out, it doesn't actually start with the lawsuit. When we pick out those, those suits, we send out demand letters. And the demand letter is basically, hey, you're in the next tax sale. I'm promising you right now, you're in it. And that does prompt a lot of taxes to be paid. So when we get to the final page, when we go over the amounts collected, you're going to see a bigger number of parcels included in this tax sale than we actually filed on because pre-petition, quite a lot of money is collected at that point. So again, this page here, I'm not going to go through this, is just basically how the tax sale proceeds. I will point out a couple of things, though. We'll file the lawsuit, you'll get service. Service, we have, once we file the lawsuit, we have 90 days to serve that 1,200 or so entities. And we can extend that, we can get a 30-day extension, so it's really 120 days, and we, we take the 30 days every single time. If we don't have good service at the end of that 120 days, we actually dismiss lawsuits. Or if we didn't get good service, we dismiss lawsuits, right? And we had to dismiss three lawsuits right before the tax sale this year because of service issues. The taxpayer has the ability, I should say owner, has the ability to come in and pay the taxes plus the cost of the lawsuit up to the date of the sale. And we'll take that, we'll take that payment the day before the sale, okay? And that actually is the redemption period. You'll hear people talk about redemption periods, right? What are my redemption rights? And your redemption rights in Kansas, because this isn't the same in all states, is from the date of the lawsuit till the day before we sell it. That's actually the redemption period. After we sell it, there are no redemption rights. That is a final sale in the state of Kansas. You can't come in a month after the sale and go, I want to pay my taxes and get my property back. Doesn't work that way in the state of Kansas. The only way that.
Now, that's different than a mortgage.
It is.
Mortgage, mortgage foreclosure.
It is.
On a mortgage foreclosure, even if it's foreclosed on by a bank, doesn't the title owner still have the ability to come in and redeem their property?
I, I, I don't do that sort of work. I don't want to speak to the technicals on that, but I've had other attorneys tell me, well, that, who have called and said, hey, how does this work? And I tell them that, they'll go, oh, that's different. So I know it's different. I don't know the technicalities or the specifics on mortgage. Kansas does have a statute that says that you can challenge the legality of the tax sale for up to 12 months after the sale. And what they mean by that, what they're, what you're challenging there is again, are there service issues? Because obviously, if you didn't get served, then you didn't know about the lawsuit, then you never had a redemption period and a chance to pay the taxes. So if you show up, if you roll up to your house one day and there's a different person in the driveway, and you go, what the heck? If you can come to my office and prove that you didn't get service, then by law, we have to give that property back. And in the past, that has happened. I can tell you in my 1.0 term that yes, that happened where we had to roll back because despite the great work that title companies do, things are missed. Errors are missed. An unknown error is the scariest thing in a tax sale. They're unknown, so they didn't get served, but they absolutely have a right to the property. So the tax, the title companies do great work, but there are times when things are just missed. So, and by the way, we do bid that out every so often. We'll call it the title companies. And, and some of them are actually not interested in doing this because this is not what they want to do. This isn't in their wheelhouse, right? But we're lucky to have a couple of very good ones. I think we've been used, we used Heartland Title, and they've been very good to work with, so I do want to shout out them. We've used them the last couple of times. Again, more specific, oh, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. So again, this particular tax sale, we're now down to the third bullet point where we're now issuing a deed. That deed, by the way, is free and clear of everything. So say that there were taxes that weren't paid because the sale didn't go high enough, doesn't matter. New owner gets it free and clear. Were there title issues before? Doesn't matter. Free and clear. Errors out there, if they got properly noticed, doesn't matter. Free and clear. This sale is actually one of the most productive ways to get property back into our system. Make it productive, be a good neighbor, so forth and so on. So there's a real need for what we do. As you can imagine, if you're the one who owes the back taxes, you can't bid on the property. If you're one of the lien holders, you can't bid on the property. Even if a bank, by the way, has a mortgage, the bank can't come to the auction and buy it, interestingly enough. What the bank can do, though, is come the day before and pay the whole thing off. And sometimes that happens. If your first cousin is going to go buy the property and then give it back to the person who owed the taxes, that's not legal. We have the ability to take that back. And also, nobody who owes delinquent taxes on any piece of property anywhere can bid on a tax sale. We do have people who don't pay. They'll bid, they'll be the successful bidder, and then they won't pay, for whatever reason. I don't know why. Maybe they run out real quick to look at what they bought because there are people who buy things sight unseen and realize that they've got themselves into a mess. If they don't pay, they are banned forever from our tax sales. They do not get back in. And, and this last time, we actually had a bidder who tried to get back in, but our memories are long here at the county. So you do pre-register. That's how we catch that. The, the properties are sold as is. We don't warrant anything. We've not visited the property. We've not gotten inside. We don't know if there's a lease, right? You could have a lease. You could have people that are actually onsite paying rent, and they've paid all their rent. They're fine. We don't, we don't have anything to do with any of that. We sell to the highest bidder, and the bidder pays what they are bid plus the court costs. The court costs, by the way, they're $500 a parcel, and that comes to the county. And we use those court costs as an offset for, we have to pay for the fees. We still pay the same fees that everybody else would in a lawsuit except for the initial filing fee. So we still pay the sheriff's fees. There are fees with the treasurer. We have all these fees that we have to pay. The title company charges a certain amount per tract, and so we collect that out of a court fee. And the, the first thing I did when I got here is I looked at what we were charging, and then we bumped that up to $500. And we actually had to prove that, that when I, when I put in a motion that we wanted to raise our fees from 350 to $500, the judge said a hearing on that. So we had to come into a hearing and prove to the judge what our court cost was, and then she was good enough that she allowed that. So this tax sale, as I said, we started out with 315 properties. That's the letter that went out saying, hey, you are in a property. And by the time that we filed the petition, there were 257 tracts left. So as you can see, about 58 properties did pay their taxes from the time that we sent that letter out. So there, there is a flurry of activity once the, you are in the lawsuit letter goes out. So we filed the lawsuit, and then of those 257 tracts, 155 tracts realized that we were serious about what we were doing and came in and paid the taxes. And as you can see, at that point, we collected 1.4 million dollars in taxes, and we collected 77,500 in court costs. So even though we started with 315 properties that were chosen by the ways that I just told you how we choose them, at the end of the day, when it got time to have the online tax sale, there were 77 properties left. So the tax sale itself, as you can see, generated only $357,000. When you compare that to all the activity that happened before the tax sale, that's where the muscle has been. So I will add that I believe all 77 properties did sell, which we're, we're always a bit nervous about, but. And that pretty much is where I end. So where are we at right now today? We're finishing up with this tax sale. So we'll be, we'll help get the deeds out, and then we'll have a period of time where the 77 properties, the, the owners or the lien holders or whoever they are, they'll have a chance to say, hey, I need my excess proceeds. That's what they're called. They're called excess proceeds. So we'll go through a, a process where, and we, we've had the same judge now for a while for these lawsuits. She'll set a Tuesday docket, and we'll be in court on Tuesday. She'll set a Tuesday docket, and we'll be in court on Tuesday. And the, the lien holders will have a chance to come and make their case. Why are you entitled to the excess proceeds, or a portion thereof? And we'll have the properties where there are three sons and daughters. So we know that if there's ten thousand dollars, they're each entitled to thirty-three, thirty-three dot thirty-three, right? One of them will come and petition, right? They don't come as a group, one of them will. And so we'll have to sit down and figure out how much they're owed. And if we agree with them, the court will set a hearing, that person will make their case. Inevitably, the court will turn to us and ask for our opinion, and, and sometimes we'll give it, and sometimes we'll have a no opinion. But that process will get started here pretty quick. And then we'll be preparing for the twenty twenty-five tax sale. So we'll start this process over, and we'll kick it off and try to get that on file next year. So, that's where we're at.
So, in Shawnee County, of the three classes, homestead, abandoned, and commercial, undeveloped,
Everything.
vacant, everything else, do we know approximately how many properties would qualify for a tax sale?
The last spreadsheet showed fourteen hundred properties. Now, that doesn't mean that there are fourteen hundred properties that we could file on. There are properties that meet the requirements I've shown you, but we cannot file on them, okay? The first obvious one is bankruptcy. If a property is in bankruptcy, the federal court has supreme jurisdiction over that property, and we cannot touch it. Now, we file with the bankruptcy court. We file that, hey, there are taxes owed and they can't be waived, right? So, there's still a process to collect there. Litigation, there's a variety of properties that are in litigation, and we steer clear of those that would needlessly complicate that process and our process. There's no sense in bringing other people's litigation into our tax sale. Because if we filed on a tax sale, or if we filed on a property that was in active litigation, we would just get a flurry of, of responses, legal responses from attorneys. And ultimately, we already know the judge would stay us to let them sort out their mess. And generally, in a property that's in litigation, when it's resolved, one of the, one of the issues that they resolve is back taxes. They'll always be paid. So we don't worry about those. We don't worry about bankruptcy, because for a property to come out of bankruptcy, usually, the great majority of the time, those taxes will get paid. Commercial properties sit in a little bit different class as well. Because we know for a fact that in order to pass clear title, taxes have to be paid. So if, if we're watching a property and it has a for-sell sign out in front, we'll know that it can't sell with clear legal title without those taxes being paid. So, and, and there are, there are other, there are other matters that cause us to be leery and steer away from, steer away from some properties. We work closely with the IRS, we work closely with the city of Topeka. We know their attorneys. And the city of Topeka, I think, one, one of the things that I hope, and I think that we're doing a good job of this, the city attorney's fairly new, but she's been here a couple of years longer than I have. We have a, I do want to sing a song of praise here to the city attorney. This is the best relationship I've ever had with a city attorney in my life. And I have seen at least ten city attorneys, right? But she is, we, we talk every week. And I have had some issues with the tax sales and city council members. And they're, they are easy to resolve, we have a good relationship on that. The city has provided us, this year for the first time in my memory, the city provided us with a list of properties that they would like to see in the tax sale, and we put them in the tax sale. So that's something that's new. And I'm, I'm very happy that we have that sort of relationship. Because a lot of times, most of the time, the city is going to have a better pulse on the problem properties inside the city limits than my office will. Because we're solely looking at back taxes, right? We don't see drug activity, crime activity, we don't see nuisance, right? We don't see weed abatement. And the city is, pun intended, in the weeds on all of that stuff. So they have the best ability to say, hey, you know, one, two, three, ABC house, what's its tax status? And we can tell them almost immediately, yeah, it, it meets the qualifications, and then bam, we'll put it right in. So I think that relationship with the city is just going to get even better. I, I also work closely, not with just Amanda, the city attorney, but also with Rhiannon at Plante, who's also been very good to work with since I've been here. And I worked on this tax sale. I think we ended up with more than ten properties in the tax sale that Rhiannon and I had sat down and discussed, and, well, emailed back and forth, basically. So, that, it was a good discussion, and we got this first tax sale. We did a lot of good with the city, and I think we'll do more of that in the next, in the next tax sale. As you know, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, the city has a land bank. They're trying to turbocharge their land bank. And one of the things that they've decided on is that they think it's a good idea to perhaps acquire properties in a land bank. And that's their decision, that's their thinking on that. I don't offer any advice. All I am is, they'll tell me what property they think might fit, and then I'll see if there's back taxes, and if so, I'll put it into the tax sale. So that, I think that's something that's pretty exciting, that is fairly new. And we'll be looking to do more of that in the future.
Looking at the properties that we have, I mean, your office, you indicated, does this by randomization in picking the tracts that are put into the tax sale. Why not just focus on the ones that are the highest value? If you have properties that worth millions of dollars, and there's taxes owed, and you're trying to get those properties collected on, you, you had a hundred and fifty-five tracts that were redeemed right prior to the sale. Why not just focus on the highest value ones? Why use the randomization? What's the benefit of that?
If we only did, if we only did by value, you're ignoring all of these nuisance abatement properties. Because these are properties that are extremely low value, which means that their taxes are extremely low value. So if I just plucked off the three hundred and fifteen most expensive properties, it would be mostly commercial, and we're not hitting the house that's been abandoned. And there are plenty of cases where I will argue to you that that property is causing more problems to our community than a large former Kmart building that's no longer... I mean, the, the abandoned commercial building still has some care to it. I mean, there's still someone taking care of it. So it, it doesn't have weed abatements, it doesn't have nuisance violations, it doesn't have crime. So if we concentrated only on who owes us the most money, I don't think we're doing civic good. Our morality here should be a mix, right? So we will take care of the bigger, the bigger stores that, or, or vacant properties, or whatever they are. We'll hit that. But we also have to be taking care of those, those properties that owe the least amount, because those are the ones that are actually a cancer in their neighborhood. That would be my argument.
When Jim Crowell was here as the county counselor, I think that he also did a similar presentation to this. The things that he kind of touched on that I remember were, if we wind up with the property not selling at auction, it then becomes the responsibility of the county. And that we would be responsible for maintaining it, mowing it, any code violations. Is that a concern that your office has?
We, we have had that concern, to be sure. And we certainly had it at the time of the tax sale. So, in sitting down to prepare for this lecture, Mr. Brazan and I read several AG opinions. And we did find an AG opinion that seems to indicate that it's, it's an opinion, right? We all have opinions, and that's all an AG's opinion is. It's not force of law, but it's an opinion. There is an opinion out there that seems to state that the county can walk away from the property and it stays in the name of the landlord. Now, that's, that's something that we just found. So we're still wrestling with that. But to be sure, in prior tax sales, that was an issue. In, in the past, there have been properties that we have taken care of. I don't think that, that, that exists today. I'll, I'll tell you this, what we were surprised at with this tax sale is the amount of money that was put into this tax sale. So all you're seeing are the delinquent taxes, which was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, right? There were properties that were bid up in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece in this tax sale. Multiple bidders. So the way the tax sale works is that we open up the portal for, it's all online, right? And we open up a portal, and there's a two or three hour window to make your bids. But at that, at that moment that the tax sale is supposed to end, and I, off the top of my head, I think it was one o'clock or two o'clock, something like that. If there's a bid within three minutes, we extend it. So it doesn't actually stop at one o'clock. It's, it's kind of like an anti-sniping, is what I call it. If you remember the early days of eBay, you would wait until thirty seconds before the auction ended, and then you would put your bid in, right? And that bid ended that moment, no matter what. And it, it was such a, a device that people used, it actually got its own name, it was called sniping. And so to defeat that, what you do is, when someone snipes at the last second, you just simply extend the, the time that the auction ends. And at five o'clock when we closed up shop, there were still a couple of properties, three hours later, that people were still bidding on. So what you don't see here, and what I didn't put up, is that the, the amount of money that, that came through those seventy-seven properties was vastly in excess. One, one property, the Shawnee County Appraiser had it appraised at two hundred and twenty thousand. And the last time I looked at it, it was at a hundred and eighty thousand in bidding. So, there, like I said, here are all seventy-seven properties sold. I know for a fact that there were some people that were bidding on properties that they had never seen. I know that for a fact. So there was a lot of money, a lot of liquidity going after these properties. So that kind of, that caused, after sitting down and analyzing what happened and looking at everything that happened, I'm, I have less fear of what you just said than I, I had before.
Of the fourteen hundred properties that are eligible, and we file on three hundred and fifteen, that leaves one thousand one hundred that we didn't get to. Of those remaining properties, are we sending out demand letters? Are we sending out notices? Are we trying collection efforts on those properties?
Absolutely, yes. They get, they get all this, they get all of that, for sure. They also get their address and owner's name published in the Metro News, which the treasurer does that. But yeah, they do get letters regularly on the back taxes, for sure. And just because it, it met, and remember, just because those eleven hundred properties met the requirements, it still doesn't mean that they're eligible for the tax sale. Because you still have bankruptcies and litigation and ownership issues and so forth and so on, so... You, you can't, you can't say, well, you, you missed eleven hundred properties. No, the number's a lot lower than that. We don't actually know what properties are in bankruptcy until we research it. So when we do that title research, that's when we find out some of these issues, and then we cannot put them in the tax sale.
Now, I know in the past, when the city has been talking about either the creation of the land bank, nuisance properties, things that they would want to see in a tax foreclosure, doesn't the city have the ability to file their own tax foreclosure?
That's a fact. There, there's actually a statute that says that the city has the ability to file their own tax sales. That is true.
So, Rich, you mentioned properties that don't sell and the attorney general's opinion. If, if a property were to go back to the original owner, do they get it free and clear at that point? Or do they still owe the taxes, even though we tried to auction it off and didn't get anything?
Yeah, taxes are still owed.
Okay. And are there properties that we ended up taking ownership in previous sales?
I can, I can remember, so this is more than ten years ago, right? But I can remember us having to mow a couple of properties. What we were doing back then, and, and this is pre-my current staff, right? But what we did back then is that we just simply kept putting that property back into the very, we would roll them into next tax sales. And inevitably, somebody who, somebody wanted them. I mean, they're, I don't know if we're taking care of any today, to tell you the truth.
That was, yeah, that was kind of my next question.
Back in the day, there were, we were mowing some, back, you know, way back when. But we would always put them into the next tax sale. And, and it would resolve itself over time. I, I think going forward now, I will have a little bit less fear about putting some of these into a tax sale. And we're, we're going to try out that AG's opinion. We'll just try it out.
Okay, so, so this is maybe the third sale that we've done online instead of in-person?
Yes.
The process used to be an in-person sale, and people would have to bring cash, I believe, or cashier's checks to the expo center and buy it there. Would you say that the, the online has been more successful? Is it easier for staff? Is it, is it beneficial to us?
So, when I, when I got here, this was new to me, right? I had never gone through an online tax sale. And they told me it was online now, and I'm like, what? What, what's that? What are we doing? And they assured me that it was much better. And we used to have them at Heritage Hall, and multiple sheriff's officers would come that day. And there would be people with fifty thousand dollars in cash in, you know, envelopes. And there'd be, and we would take personal checks back then, we would. But as I always warn people, that be careful, because you're handing a personal check, you're literally handing it to a sheriff's officer. So it better be good. The wrong time to write a bad check. Inevitably, there would be a bad check, every time. But the online process, I do believe is better, after I've sat now through it. And of course, Tabitha and Cheyenne were all over me, yeah, you're not going to want to go back. This is so much better. And they're right, it is. And of course, that, we pay for that, right? We pay for the online, the portal, the Civic, Civic Plus is who runs that. And we pay for that, but that, and again, that's what the court fees are for. So one of the reasons we raised the court fee up to five hundred dollars is to help pay for Civic Plus. So even then, we're not using taxpayer money. And, and maybe that's a point to be made. That five hundred dollar fee that we tack on, that's paying for all of this. So the taxpayer money isn't paying to conduct the sale, if that makes sense. So of those three hundred and fifteen properties, and we get five hundred dollars a property, that more than pays for the service, it pays for the title company, it pays for Civics Plus. So, a good thing about that court cost is, that's what that's doing. So I don't come to you and say, I need, no, I, I need front money, right? So I, I always have front money from you in my budget. But we more than give that back to you on the court costs.
You know, we talked about that the city has the ability to file their own tax foreclosure. Has the city ever filed a tax foreclosure in your memory?
Not in my memory. And I'm going to tell you that I think the city would be smart to not do that. They can, I'm not trying to dissuade them at all. But we already have the process rocking and rolling. And to recreate that would be, you know, time, a lot of time. And I have to, and I, I haven't, I didn't read that statute closely, I know that it exists. But it, it might put the city in a position where they're also collecting the mill levy money for 501 and, and the airport, and other entities. So I'm not for sure how that works. Obviously, they can't do that to a property outside of the city limits, right? So they wouldn't be collecting for townships. But I, I, I think the way the process works now, particularly with the, I don't want to say a better relationship, because I think Jim had a good relationship with the city. So don't take it that way. But I went out of my way to develop a good relationship. Like it was a priority, a bullet point, when I got here, to go meet the city attorney and, and planning and zoning Rhiannon. And they've been very receptive. So I, I think they, they both know, and city managers well, they know, and certainly a couple of city council members who already do it, they know they can call me and we'll get those properties into a tax sale. So I think with the knowledge that they have of that, and how closely we worked on this tax sale, I don't think there'll be a need for that. I don't, I don't think they'll think that there's a need for that.
The taxes, it's not just removing Shawnee County's taxes, it removes all the taxes.
I would prefer to say it collects all the taxes. Yes, sir.
But I mean, if it ultimately goes to a tax sale, if of those seventy-seven properties, school districts don't get their taxes that are due, the MTAA, the library, the city, the county, any taxing entity, it's just gone.
If we have to wipe it clean. I suspect that the majority of those seventy-seven sold in excess, right? They sold in excess. Very few, very valuable properties get to that seventy-seven number. The, the properties of value find a way, right? The, the property that I told you about, that, that the appraiser had at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it was a house in the Shawnee Heights area. It was just, it was a residence. And for whatever reason, they chose not to pay the taxes. That, that, it's, it's rare that you get a property like that. But you, you don't, what you don't see is you don't see large commercial buildings getting to the seventy-seventh property point. You don't see that. So that's why that's, that class, the ones that actually sell on tax day, that's why that number is, you know, a fourth of what... that's why that number is, you know, a fourth of what was collected post-petition but pre-sale. People do clean it up. There, there's, you know, this is more of me meandering than it is a fact, but I think the numbers back it up. There are people who just, they don't take things seriously until it's serious. And a lawsuit, that's litigation. That's, that's as serious as it gets in our world. So there are just people who just, la di da, here's your lawsuit, oh, well, time to pay. And they do.
Of the one thousand four hundred properties that are eligible, do we know how many are coming on or going, I mean, is this a constant number? Is this a high number? Do we know if it's?
I, so there are, dang it, Bauman has told me this before. There are, I, this is just a pure guess, and I could be wrong. But there's like eighty to ninety thousand parcels, I think, in Shawnee County. I hate to say that out loud, because I could be grievously wrong, but it's something like that. I don't think fourteen hundred is an anomaly. Where it's at historically, I don't know. And there's no longer fourteen hundred, there's eleven hundred. It'll be, it'll kick back up on January one. So. That is not a number that scares me.
I didn't know if this is a pretty steady number, or if it, how it fluctuates up and down.
Well, we'll, we'll certainly monitor that in the years to come and let you know. And we can go back and tell you what it's been historically for the last four years or five years, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Mayes, any other questions?
No, you know, I guess also, I think of the hundred and fifty-five tracts that were redeemed prior to the sale, I think there are also some real estate investors that will identify the properties and go and try and reach out to the owners to buy the property prior to sale also. I think that's something that happens as well, from what I've heard, but.
Yes, that, that is a fact. We'll end up with a whole new owner, certainly before petition or the foreclosure day, sure. We, and probably something I need to add that I haven't, is that all year long, we field phone calls from people, how do I get onto the tax sale list? How do I get to be a bidder? We get those phone calls all the time. And we'll get a lot of those from out of state. We'll have out of state investment teams and firms trying to get onto our list. So there, there is a certain, a, a great deal of activity, a great appetite to have this tax sale. Seventy-seven properties sold, could we sell a hundred and forty? I'm sure we could. Could we sell two hundred? I'm sure we could. The problem is those chokeholds I talked about getting us to that level. I did have a talk with my team about going in, in excess of three hundred and what that would entail. And we'll continue to have that conversation, by the way. And I'll, I'll just have to let you know how that comes out. I have not had a great deal of, of conversation with the clerk of the district court, and that is something that I intend to do before we file this next tax sale. This process was well along the way by the time I got on board for this tax sale. But for the next tax sale, it's all, it's all underneath my regime. So I do want to have a talk with the clerk of the district court, have a talk with the sheriff's office, and see, you know, maybe with the advent of computerization, things are better. I know it, it, this, this last two years would have been a horrible time to ask the clerk to help us because of the statewide hack of the computer system. I'm, I'm very sure we couldn't have done any more than we did. And, and to be honest with you, it's something that, that everyone's still struggling with. Mostly it's gone, mostly it's gone, but some things are not going to come back. So that, that hack has hurt them, and it's, Mr. Cook, as you know, in your private world, it has hurt a lot of us. And so the last two years, I, I'm for sure that we could not have bumped that number up, just because of the, I mean, how many weeks were we on paper? We went back to paper. We had paper filing in the year twenty twenty-three. So hopefully, things will be better going forward as we, as we've worked through that hack. So I do intend to have a talk with the clerk of the district court and to see if they think this number is, is a good number for them. Because at the end of the day, when we got to the filing, there were two hundred and fifty-seven that we filed on. That's, that's where the work started, right? So we will investigate that, that choke point.
When a property gets to the, I mean, they've gotten their notice in the Metro News or the treasurer's office, they've gotten their letter, the lawsuit's been filed, it's coming down to the wire, properties are still delinquent, it's getting to the day of the sale. Does your office get phone calls of people that are trying to structure payoffs or structure plans to pay off?
Yeah, we get, we get asked that a lot. The, the beauty of the system is that the legislature has told us what we can and we can't do. And, and as you know, statutes are basically commandments, commandments, thou shalt. So the legislature has been very clear that we can't strike deals, we cannot shave off, we can't cut the interest, we can't cut the penalties. We can't cut any of that. The only thing that we really have say over is the court costs. And I, I am a firm believer that it's, it's your fault that you're in this position, not the county's. It is not our fault that you didn't pay your taxes and you're at the point that you're at. Now, I'm not saying that they don't have good reasons, right? There's obviously good reasons. There's bills, there's medical bills, there's inflation, everything else. I'm not denigrating why a person would end up in a position where they can't pay their taxes. But the court costs aren't our fault, right? It could very well be a no-fault situation, perfectly allowable. But we've gotten to the point where we do have hard costs into the point where we're at right now.
Can a person say, I'll pay the court costs if you'll dismiss?
And not without paying the full amount of taxes, they can't, no.
Okay. So once it gets to that point, it's really a very dire spot.
Yeah. The, the one time that, that the court costs might not get paid is if we actually find an error, like you heard me say earlier, there might be an error in the service of process, or, or the title work, I should say. Oh, well, actually, both. There could be errors in both the service of process or the title work. And if we, if we do do that, and we dismiss that lawsuit or that property from the lawsuit, we do not charge them those court costs, for sure. Because that wasn't their fault. So they're, they're, and then they're, they have the ability to then pay the taxes before the next lawsuit. As a matter of fact, there was a property that, there, there were multiple properties that we dismissed this year. I can't remember how much it was, less than ten, right? We dismissed less than ten properties, for various reasons. And, but we tell all ten of them, we tell them, hey, you survived to fight another day, but you're in the next tax sale, twenty twenty-five. So you don't have the court cost now, so you saved the five hundred dollars, but interest is still accruing, and you're still eligible for the next tax sale, and your property's going in the next tax sale. We, one of the things that we've, that we fight internally is how punitive the whole system is, right? But we have no choice. This is the state of Kansas telling us this is how things are done. And, you know, it's, we, we get some heartbreaking phone calls, to be sure. And Tabitha and Cheyenne take terrible phone calls. And I probably don't do a good enough job of, you know, understanding what they have to go through, because they're, they're the barrier, right? They're the wall. And, you know, they, they get the tells of a widow, someone has cancer. They, we get those phone calls every tax sale, horrible stories. And the state of Kansas, the state of Kansas is clear, taxes have to be paid.
If a person said, if the county commission said, we want to have all fourteen hundred properties cleared off the books, and we're going to have, we're going to have three more, or two, hire two more attorneys in your office, we're going to hire two more additional staff in your office, and, you know, district court and title companies and sheriffs and everybody else buckle up, it's going to be a, a rough ride, and you filed five lawsuits in one year, would that be a way to clear off the books in one year?
Absolutely. I don't think we'd need another attorney, okay? I think that we could do it with bringing the process serving in-house. And I think we could do it, and I'd want to talk to the sheriff about that, too, by the way. So I don't want to cut them out of the conversation. But I think, I think where the help would come, and I think it's Wyandotte County that does this, that Wyandotte County basically has very little to do with the clerk of the district court, which is a, is a choke point for us. They have, I, I believe, three people in the treasurer's office who does nothing but the tax sale. That they're constantly the ones churning that paper. And they also do the title work in-house, but I don't think that actually makes sense. I think it makes the most sense in the world to use a title company for that, because they're better at it, they're faster at it, and it's insured. So I would never want to take that, bring that in-house. So we, you still use the title company. But I think if we work with the treasurer to add a couple of people there and take some of that work away from the clerk of the district court, that would be the way that you would attack it. But you would be adding two people with benefits. You know, maybe you can get them hired for between fifty and sixty thousand a year, so you, your costs are now a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to bring that fourteen hundred down to three hundred, right? Because you're always going to have parcels added at the end of the year. You'd have to weigh yourself if that's worth it. Ultimately, all those properties, when they get sold, taxes get paid, ultimately. So what you're really talking about is, do you want a three-year lag, or do you want a six-year lag? That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I believe Wyandotte County also has a pretty large land banking program that they run also out of their tax sales.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit hard every now and then to compare with Wyandotte County, because they're also Kansas City, Kansas. So they have, they're, they mesh, they, they are meshed. Whereas, see, if Topeka and us are entirely different, and we have to talk and hash things out, there, they don't have to do that.
Mr. Mayes, any other?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation and items for us to think about moving forward. Our next item would be public comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. That was very informative. That was good. Good, good work. I think what we learned today is that this just really needs to be a full-time job. He says he's doing it in his spare time, you know? So if we just make this like part of the process every day, just take the, you know, the best way to eat an elephant is a bite at a time. And I like the idea of going after the high-profile properties. One thing I hate more than anything is land bank. The last thing I want is the city of Topeka being in the real estate business. But it also defeats the whole purpose of why we took the property, and that's to get it on the tax rolls. So the idea, plus the, the hotel mentality, it, that, those are the same guys that are going to run the land bank. Land banks are usually used for like putting together legends. You know, you'd have a, a, a in-use. But really, to put the city of Topeka in the late, in the real estate business is a bad idea. One thing that, one thing that I really found most interesting about that presentation, and you were trying to hammer the point home of not looking at the last name of the people who owed the taxes, why would your county counselor be dealing with the planning department? How could you have a meeting with Rianna and be talking about just tax, well, item, you know, tax parcel? You'd have to know the people's last name. You couldn't be having a meeting with planning and not be talking about who owns what and what you're going to do with it. That was the most eye-opening thing I, I heard today of. How does that meet the statute of just selling the real estate and auctioning it? And when I read KSA, whatever, that, that states how you're going to foreclose on property, it says right in it vacant land every year. And so he said that once, once you read the Kansas law, you know, that's like God writing it. And then if you look on our website, there's a disclaimer that almost gives the guy that's the attorney every out-known demand. And I, I mean, I think this was a great, what, what a lot of success, you got a lot of money. But it just proves, we just need to do it daily. We just, and what's really nice is you two can, one of you can write a memo to the other guy, and we could come back Thursday, and you can say, there's another tax sale, and here, let's just get on it. Because he's, he's just doing it in, in his spare time. And, you know, there's like about twenty-three thousand dollars that we're paying in title fee. You know, there, if, maybe if we just worked a little harder, we could do some of it in-house. There, there could be a way to do this. And, but what happened, and the idea of the website and complaining, you know, finding a website, for some reason, I think that this all got started because somebody came down here and complained about Lawrence Bay. I don't know. I just get that feeling. But what went on out there took a decade. And we, we can change today. You know, we could have a metropolitan planning commission today if you guys would just put your head on, head, you know, heads together. We could, we can have another tax sale. Hey, let's just start on it now and get it to where we're turning over the inventory, and we're doing it as fast as, you know, as fast as we can. I should take notes. It's hard to argue UK, so. But that was successful, because we did it. And if we just make it a part of our daily business. So I, I like the idea of, of taking as many as we can, as fast as we can. We're better off at the end of the day, giving the real estate, hey, do you want that vacant lot? And just having them pay taxes on it and getting it on the tax roll. I mean, you have to, you have to generate the income from the people that aren't paying. And so that, that was a lot of success. The online worked. On another note, thank you for getting that circus to town, because that was a lot of fun. I was in, I went to the circus last night out at, by the golf course out there at Forbes. Very organized, they're making ten bucks a whack on parking, which is a good deal. But you know, that whole deal that happened out there because they couldn't deal with the expo center. And let me tell you what, that was a fun show. It wasn't as risky as, I was hoping for more risque, but it wasn't. It was, it was really pretty calm. But I asked a fellow standing in line to go to the bathroom, I said, hey, what do you think of the show? He goes, I drove an hour and a half from Kansas City, and three people spoke up. And that, that, that circus drew people from Kansas City, so that was a good deal. And, and we might have left a little money on the table, but God, it was great, a lot of fun. So thank you for that, and thanks for the presentation on the tax sale. We, I think this has created the awareness that we just need to make it part of day-to-day business and get going with it, get, turn over that inventory. Think about the, when you think about the, the title companies, you know, every, every whipstitch of information they get is from our, our records that we have through the registered deeds in the courthouse. So maybe there's a hybrid way to do that between in-house and title companies on the sticky ones. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Any other public comment this morning?
The only thing I would add is that the referral site on the website has been up for more than three years.
Okay, great. Any administrative communications this morning? Anything further?
Just went to the airshow this weekend. I actually went multiple times, because I was so impressed Friday night when I was there that made sure to go back with the, the rest of the family. And I don't know if you've seen any of the videos online, but it was pretty cool. I mean, what a great event for Shawnee County. And, and like you mentioned, the circus was in town. Sounds like that was successful as well. So busy weekend in South Shawnee County. So hopefully, the first of many to come.
Very good. I don't have anything additional, so. I don't have anything additional, so we are adjourned. We'll be back on Thursday.